Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July the 8th, 2025. It's 9:00 a.m., and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. This is a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas. Today, we are pleased to have with us our regular Hood County Commissioner Chaplain, Pastor Mike McMahon here of the Fellowship Church, to give us the invocation. But he also brought with him his lovely wife, Sandy, as backup here today. So do your best today. You will be graded on this invocation, sir. Pastor McMahon.
Before I pray, I want us to take a moment and remember those down in the hill country, those who are gone, and those who are still here and grieving, and for the people who are down there cleaning up. That's a, I cannot imagine what that would be like, to be walking around down there and stumble over something and find a child. Dear God, Father, thank you. Thank you for the comfort that we can get in coming before you. Thank you for the peace and the comfort and the, just the innards to go through this for the families who have lost loved ones, for the people who are down there cleaning the place up, seeking that which hopefully will be found. We praise you, Father, that through all of this, we can turn to you, we can literally almost come and jump in your lap and just say, "Oh, Father, thank you for taking care of me," but mostly, thank you for taking care of those who have lost loved ones. So now, as we open this with prayer this morning, we thank you, Father, for the opportunity to bring this meeting before you. We thank you for the Commissioners who are here this morning, and we thank you again for the peace and the joy that we have in loving you, and we praise you for it. And, Lord, as soon as this phone stops ringing in my ear, I'll be able to finish. Thank you. We thank you for this court, for the work that they're going to be doing today. I pray that you open their, the eyes of their understanding, open them to wisdom, truth, peace, and love, and we thank you for it, in the name of Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
All right. I wish to announce to everybody that Commissioner Wilson is speaking today at the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs, Colorado, which is why he's not here with us. And so, no special presentation, no service awards, right? So now, we're into the Citizens' Comment at Large, and our first speaker, nobody knows him here, but I think I've heard his name, is Jim Jarrett.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate it. I just wanted to comment on one of the items that may, may not come up about the North Central Texas Council of Governments and the question on the pay designation that occurred over the past couple of weeks. This was simply a bookkeeping opportunity. The pay designation, I understand, was to the city of Granbury, but used for the Hood County Coalition, the Clean Air Coalition. And I explained this as such, as checks have routing numbers and account numbers. This designation was City of Granbury to the Hood County Clean Air Coalition. And if it's an issue, you know, we'll take care of it and work, you know, work something out with the, with the county. But I just wanted people to know that that is how it went from A to B to the Clean Air. But I also wanted to take just a moment to say how important the Hood County Clean Air Coalition has been to both the county and the city as it relates to our work with the NetCog, the North Central Texas Council of Governments. That unity that we have shown working on special projects for reducing and keeping the pollution down in this county, just our efforts alone have spoken volumes for the people at NetCog. And what they recognize is people that would work together, and all of a sudden, we find that we have not only the judge, but also Commissioner Samuelson, working in the NetCog transportation side of the business. And we have increased our presence, and we have increased our, I would say, importance to the NetCog as they start divvying up all of the many dollars that get divvied up to do transportation projects. And I'm certainly speaking specifically of 377. So I appreciate it, and if there are questions, we're happy to work with you to keep this initiative going and to keep the work, working together going. Thank you both.
Well, thank you for coming down. It's very important that we keep, I see Michelle McKenzie's up here, too. This is very important. We get out of attainment, it's some bad things that happen to us, a lot of taxes, a lot of registrations on our cars and stuff that will really come into this. It's really important stuff. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming up here and sharing your thoughts with us. I concur wholeheartedly. Okay, that's the only, that's the only one we have on open mic, isn't it, then? So, okay, so that brings us to the miscellaneous business. The first item is to discuss and take appropriate action to award RFP 2025-10 Historic Courthouse Window Repair. Yes, we have two great guys here, Glenn Tillman and Mr. Leland Lawrence here. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. RFP 2025-10 Historic Courthouse Window Repair closed on June 18th at 9:00 a.m. There were two responses received. As you can see, Prestige BMS Maintenance and Construction from Houston bid $124,000 and scored 66 points out of 100. Cardinal Waterproofing of Colleyville had a score of 97.5, submitting a bid of $56,795. So Maintenance and Purchasing recommend making the award to Cardinal Waterproofing.
Do you have anything to add to that, Leland? You agree?
I agree. I've gone over both the proposals, and Cardinal Waterproofing has a solid plan on how to get our windows fixed.
Anybody have any other questions or discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award RFP 2025-10 Historic Courthouse Window Repair to Cardinal Waterproofing.
Thank you.
Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to award RFP 2025-10 Historic Courthouse Window Repair to Cardinal Waterproofing, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the good work y'all put into that. That was a good deal there. Thank you. Thank you, sir, for coming down. Do a good job.
We will, sir.
Okay. All right. Item number two. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign a letter of support for the inclusion of Hood County within the service area of Foreign Trade Zone, FTZ Number 39. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Shay Hopkins.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, so I'm asking for support for the signature of the letter that would include us in the DFW Foreign Trade Zone. And why I'm asking for this is because it gives our current businesses, as well as businesses looking to relocate, a competitive edge by allowing the federal taxes to be delayed and kind of making us what I call a free parking zone until those items are sold. They do not owe those tariffs and those taxes. This has become increasingly important in the last few months. We are seeing more and more requests for information that are requiring that we be part of a foreign trade zone for them to even look at Hood County. And so this kind of puts us ahead of the game. If there is a project that we would really like to relocate here, and they require that, it would be too late for us to go after it at that time. So that's why I'm asking for it preemptively before we see those projects. And then it also allows current businesses that could benefit from being a part of the Foreign Trade Zone to apply. And I think probably the key to this is this is just including us in the Foreign Trade Zone. You're not giving up any control. Everyone that applies to the Foreign Trade Zone, any business, would still have to come before the court and get your support for that application. So this is simply the inclusion in the Foreign Trade Zone, and you're not saying yes to any specific company or project. It's just the, the ability for them to apply.
Good. Mr. Mills, have you, have you checked into this as well? I talked to Judge Dean, I talked to Judge Dean in Parker County, and he basically said the same thing that Ms. Hopkins just said here, and said that, you know, we really don't have really much of a choice of, of not doing it.
That, I, nobody really brought it to my attention, except for Nanette called about it yesterday. I had asked about the next one, and I think, I think this is related to the next one, right? About the potential project that's coming here or maybe coming here, is it really? Okay. So I did look into number three some, and I actually emailed Shay about some questions about that I had, but the foreign, no, I haven't looked into this one really, except, you know, like I said, Nanette called me about it yesterday, but she called me about a few other things, and it was too much to, you know, dig into everything, because it was all kind of just at the last second. So I, I don't have a lot of background on this one.
Yeah. Well, I like what she said on the thing. We're not giving anybody carte blanche to get this status. You've still got to come in and qualify, but we do have it available, so we're not going to, yeah.
Well, and, and I will tell you, I've, I've been coordinating with our adjacent counties. So Parker has approved and, and signed their letter of support. Palapinto is, is up for signing theirs at their next Commissioners' Court, and then it is also on the docket for Wise County. That was at the recommendation of the DFW Foreign Trade Zone. We are stronger together, so if we all apply kind of as a unit, then we're more likely to be approved. I can tell you that this is definitely a competitive advantage. Abilene has been trying to get a Foreign Trade Zone for about five years and has been unable to, because they're not in the right proximity, so they have to create their own. So this is an advantage that has been kind of at our back door that we haven't taken advantage of, so I think that this is a good opportunity. And again, it still gives y'all full oversight of each and every application.
So what, what is the procedure? I mean, we're talking about just signing off on a letter today, but what is the procedure to be, you know, I've looked at Zone Number 39, and it's DFW Airport, and it's go, it's the way I've read it, it's a 60-mile radius. And I guess the question, one question I've got is, why aren't we already in it? If, do we have to ask to be in it, apparently? And what is the procedure if we sign off on this letter today? You know, what's the procedure from here? Because, you know, I'm, I'm still trying to get my hands around all this, and, you know, we haven't done, this hasn't become an issue till now. And what kind of, I've asked you a lot of questions here, but what kind of timeline are we on also?
Yeah. So typically, we would know within six months if we've been approved. So if we sign this letter today, we would actually wait for the other counties as well so that we could do a joint application. And basically, all the joint application is, is all of our letters of approval get sent to DFW Foreign Trade Zone, saying that we are all requesting that we be included in Zone 39. And from there, they review that application, they determine whether or not they will allow that inclusion to all of our counties, and then they would notify us. And so then, when companies apply to be in the Foreign Trade Zone, they have to tick that they're in an approved zone. So that's what it allows companies that are already here and companies looking to come in is when they, to, to even let them apply at all. So when they apply, then that would trigger us to have to review that as well. So we look at the application, we decide if this is a company that, that we think should be included in the Foreign Trade Zone, and then we would proceed accordingly from there, either, either with or without y'all's approval. And then why it hasn't been done before, it is not the easiest and shortest of tasks. And so this is something I've been working on for at least six or seven months now, trying to coordinate with the other counties, getting the information from DFW to see how we could make sure that our application is, is looked at and reviewed and hopefully approved. So doing all of those steps is probably why it hasn't been done previously. And because of all of the new tariffs, it has become more important than it, than it was previously. Companies are having to really look at their cost of goods, and a lot of companies have said that in order to not pass that along to their customers, they're looking for ways to be able to import and then pay those taxes at point of sale, not at point of entry. So it helps with, with cash flow, basically.
So can you give us an example of a business right now in Hood County that, that would be someone who would want to look into this and apply and be part of it?
Sure. High-tech tool and die, Granbury Manufacturing Co., Bond Arms, anyone in the distribution and logistics realm. I recently had a site visit from a manufacturer of auto parts, and that was one of their key criteria, that they, they couldn't even look at our location unless we were in the Foreign Trade Zone. So anything in the automotive, construction material, so Granbury Brick and Stone could potentially benefit from this. Anyone that, even if the tiniest piece is being imported for their manufacturing process or their tooling process, they could benefit from this.
Thank you. That's very comprehensive. We do have two speakers on here, so thank you, Ms. Hopkins. We have first Daniel Lakey. You going to give your time?
I, I put for 283. I'll just speak on number three.
Okay. Second is Don Alley.
Thank you, Judge. I'm just going to give my time back. I believe the Speaker did an excellent job of presenting their case to the Commissioners' Court, and I have nothing further.
Thank you both gentlemen very much. Okay. So after hearing that, do I hear a motion?
I have a few things to say first. So Ms. Hopkins said that she's been looking into this for six to seven months, but the first that I knew about it was when it was put on the agenda last Wednesday. So I didn't know what it was, so true to form, I had to do a little bit of research on it, and I, I have learned a few things about it. And what I've learned is that the approval of a Foreign Trade Zone can have a significant impact on local property taxes, primarily due to tax exemptions provided under U.S. Foreign Trade Zone Act of 1934. There is a potential reduction in local tax revenue due to exemption on inventory taxes. A Foreign Trade Zone designation could decrease taxable inventory value. Local governments must weigh this potential revenue loss. Has this been discussed with GISD? Because as you all know, that of the property taxes that are paid in, in Hood County, two-thirds of it goes to the school district. I checked with one of our school board members who had not heard of this either. I reached out to Mr. Law, Jeff Law, our chief appraiser, and confirmed the inventory exemption. He also mentioned the additional work on taxing entities. Who's, who's going to do that work? What is the scope and the volume of the work? I spoke with Ms. Matlock, who had not heard of this and didn't know what the scope of the work would be either. So at its core, it looks to me, and you've confirmed that with your statements, that this is favoring foreign investment versus made in the USA. Foreign Trade Zones primarily benefit businesses engaged in international trade, import businesses. Businesses that focus on domestic markets may see little to no value, little to no advantages, limiting the zone's overall impact on the economy, especially if the economy is driven by domestic demand like retail, real estate, or local services. A Foreign Trade Zone may not significantly enhance growth and could underperform expectations. Establishing and maintaining a Foreign Trade Zone requires significant investment in infrastructure, security, and compliance with U.S. Customs Service, U.S. Customs Services regulations. These can be substantial for local governments or businesses. Allocating resources to a Foreign Trade Zone could divert funds from other critical projects such as transportation. Increased industrial activity in a Foreign Trade Zone could lead to environmental impacts, traffic congestion, or strained, strains on local resources potentially affecting quality of life. We just heard this court and just a few minutes ago, and we've heard at several other times over the last year, how close we are to reaching a non-attainment zone in Hood County, and how important it is, which was just reiterated a few minutes ago, how important it is that we maintain our current status and we don't go into the non-attainment position in Hood County. Thank you to our Hood County Clean Air Coalition for pointing that out again today. What are the unintended consequences? Additional strain on infrastructure, traffic congestion? We've been working on a master thoroughfare plan for over a year and to, to address our infrastructure needs, but we don't know yet what the voters will do. We do not know, we do know that businesses are coming here already. Just in precinct two, there are five to six industrial projects already breaking ground or soon on the horizon. I was told very bluntly by one of these companies, primarily due to transmission lines, access to power, relatively inexpensive land, and now with the incentives from our federal and state government on develop, that developments are coming. So I ask the question, why do this at all? This, at best, is premature. We should see what happens in November, and in the meantime, the county can learn more about what is required, what are the potential impacts, and if we go forward with this, assess our economic strengths, see what our community thinks about this before pursuing Foreign Trade Zones. Engaging stakeholders in our community and doing a detailed study to understand more about this is what we should do to ensure that we have our communities back and that we are listening to what our community wants. We need to understand the growth trajectory and what our community is, what our community wants, educate our community on what this is before we go any further. That's.
I'd like for you to respond, please.
There's a lot there, so I'll try to cover it all. First of all, three months ago, I sent all of the Commissioners, as well as the judge, a ton of information on what Foreign Trade Zone is, links to the website, a webinar if you chose to go on it, which the judge did. So there's been ample time to learn about what Foreign Trade Zone is and what it isn't. As far as school taxation go, our GISD loses tax dollars every year because we're over the limit. So I think that this is not going to have any significant impact, and the best part is, y'all get to gauge what the impact is, because you would see every single project that applies. So it's not like by supporting a free, a Foreign Trade Zone, there's going to be some sort of windfall of loss in revenue. It would be a case-by-case basis, and you get to weigh, is this something worth supporting? Is this a business that we want to keep in this community? Are these jobs that matter to the people that live here and support the school and support housing and support real estate? Or is this a company that we could potentially lose, and they could move to Parker County, or they could move to Tarrant County because they do support business-friendly things like this? So I think that that's the intent of this, is that y'all still have the ability every single time to weigh all of that on a case-by-case basis. But by saying no, you lose the ability to even look at it and to be competitive and to say, can we save this business? Well, right, if you, if you don't approve it, then you don't have the tools to even try to save a business, to even try to save jobs. And so I think that's the major thing here, is by saying yes to this, all you're saying is now we can look at it. Now we can determine whether or not, case by case, this is something we want to do. What is the specific impact, one by one, that it would have on this community, on taxes, on the school district? And, and so I think I hit most of them, but if there's other ones, I can.
One of the things you said is, we can decide. That is not our job to pick winners and losers. That is not the government's job to pick winners and losers. That's the free market's job, is my opinion.
Well, you're not picking winners and losers. You're deciding if the impact to the county is too great or too small. So you're weighing options, you're making an educated decision that is best for the people that elected you. In my opinion, you were elected to make smart, business-savvy decisions for the people of this community that protect, protect jobs, protect the economy, and move us forward.
That's what this does. It gives us the idea to look at each deal. All it does is make it available. We're not approving anything. We're not approving anything.
In the future, when one comes up, then you're saying we would decide whether we want to allow it or not, and there we go. We're saying, you get it, but you don't, and we're picking winners and losers. I still think we need to have more discussion with our community on the impact of this.
That's what always happens. You know, if you sell a good product, you get a winner. If you sell a sorry product, you get a loser. So we look at it and say, if it's good jobs, if it brings good money, if it's good for the community and has no negative effects, we let it in. If it has negative effects on the community, we don't let it in. It stands on its own merits, which is like, everybody should be judged, you know? You know, there's an old saying, you know, we can explain it to you, but we can't learn it for you.
We let it in. You said it. We let it in, the government. We let it in. You said it, Judge.
Thank you for that, Miss, Judge. Because I, let me, let me read a couple of things here. And I'm not advocating that we go, go against this thing in the long run, but I have not had, I don't, I don't care what you sent three months ago. I get, I get stuff all the time. If it's not, if I don't look at it going on the agenda, then I don't have, then I've got other things to look at. If you sent us that stuff three months ago, I didn't pay attention to it till you and I met a couple of weeks ago. And I've been trying to get my hands around this, believe me. I'm not, for me, I'm not ready to vote on this today, and that's why I asked you what the, a timeline is, because I would, you know, I'm leaning towards at least give us another till the next court. But it's, not every business benefits from an FTZ status. It mostly helps import heavy operations. We have a bunch of importers here? I don't think so. Exporters, companies with high inventory and/or international supply chains. So I'm not saying I'm against this. In theory, I'm just, I need some more time on this, because I just, I pulled up the, this is under, by the way, 19CFR, oh, Part 146, Foreign Trade Zones. It's 245-page regulatory statute. I have not had a chance to review this, because I'm not sure what we're buying into. And all I'm saying is that I, I would like a little bit more time on this, because, and here's another question right now. Is this contingent, is the next agenda item contingent on this item?
No.
Okay. All right. Then I'm going to make a motion that we table this until at least the next Commissioners' Court.
Can I, can I throw a little, a little in here? Boy, we're, we're getting into some, these are tough decisions, folks. This is, there are issues that, that run really deep and affect a lot of things. Air conditioner companies get imported parts. Air conditioner companies get imported parts. Is this, you know, is this something with the tariffs that are going on? And help me understand this a little bit, Shay. I know we've spent some time talking about this stuff, but is it... It's mainly dealing with tariffs that are charged on these things that get kind of postponed until the time that they're sold? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. So let's use a... Someone that's just getting a single part. So tariffs are funny. Sometimes a single part is tariffed at a higher rate than a completed item. And so sometimes when people just need one or two parts that are only made in foreign, they still want to make their product in the USA, and they want to make it in Granbury, Texas, or in Tolar, Texas. But the tariffs have become so heavy that there are real conversations going on about having to move their businesses out of places that don't support business-friendly items like this. And so the reason I brought it to everyone's attention and why places like Mineral Wells, who also don't have heavy manufacturing, or Parker County, is because they want to protect the businesses that they do have and at least make it an option to apply for it. And if you don't want to pick winners and losers, then I guess you could approve every
There are... There are a lot of issues at play here. And I'm very concerned that saying no to this means that we just turn into a rooftop community and all of our people that live here are going to be employed in DFW and commute every day. There are... Which, I see the mayor back there, 377, we're just putting more burden and strain on that, for sure. There are... Boy, this is... There has to be, at some point, we have to start looking at kind of a holistic view here. I don't know if it's as simple as picking winners and losers. I know that, you know, on a principal level or whatever, then that's there, but if we start losing businesses because we're not even here to take a look at it, I've said over and over again, we can't, you know, cut off our nose to spite our face here, and I'm a little concerned that sometimes we'll do that. If the right opportunity comes along, like I've said, if Tesla comes in here and wants to have a bunch of $200,000 a year jobs and, you know, whatever, you know, or SpaceX, we'll go that route, then, you know, I don't know if we say no to that. And even with some concession on the front end of tax abatements or whatever, you can end up greatly affecting the homeowner's tax base with increasing the valuation that's going on without putting more rooftops into the county. I think that these are complex issues that we really need to sit down and think about. I agree with you. If somebody comes in here with a competitive... If we have a business here and somebody comes in and wants to compete against that business and asks for some kind of a tax abatement, some kind of a government picking winners and losers or whatever, I absolutely have a problem with that. But whenever you're looking at potentially some opportunities that just... It's not a competitive thing. You're not competing against somebody already in place. That stuff gets a little more gray area, and these are tough things.
Well, and one other thing that I will add is what a lot of communities do so that they don't feel like it's on their decision. They create a set of standards that is discussed and voted on so they can create a standard for foreign trade zone applications, that it has to create X number of jobs, it has to create X number of investment. You can put any criteria in that that you basically grade it on so that everyone is graded on the same scale, you know? So it's not, oh, this day I was feeling this way, and that day maybe the commissioners were kinder and ready to vote yes. There's a standard set that you look at each and every time for each and every application. And again, I don't think there's going to be a windfall of applications. I would be happy or surprised if there was one or two a year, but if you have that standard set that you're looking at it, then it does level the playing field of how you're determining who qualifies for a foreign trade zone and who doesn't.
One of the...
Yeah?
One of the other things that I ran across was this publication by Bureau Miller Law Firm, talking about how companies are missing the opportunity when they're in a foreign trade zone to take advantage of the decreased ad valorem taxes. It says, "Under Title 19, Section 81 of the United States Code, a company who, for example, holds large inventory for export, store-imported heavy equipment for domestic production, or imports large quantities of inputs for manufacturing, could maximize its duty and fee benefits but fail to capture the ad valorem tax savings. In some cases, the ad valorem tax savings for a company utilizing an FTZ may outweigh the duty or fee benefits." So we need to really take a look at this because the unintended consequences could be more than... You were worried about going from the 10% to 20% on the homestead exemption. You should be more worried about this because this is manufacturing businesses throughout the county that could impact our revenue.
My concern with the 10% to 20% is that just all goes to business. That wasn't a tax cut. That was just moving that to renters and businesses.
Well, you were worried about the shift. Well, here's... If this ad valorem tax base goes away or is reduced, then where does that go?
How do you... I'm not... I didn't understand that.
Okay. What this is saying is that businesses that hold inventory... You know what business personal property tax is? That is reduced by, if you're in a foreign trade zone, you get a discount or it's actually taken out of your business personal property tax. You don't pay... The company then is exempt from business personal property tax. So where does that decrease from that go? To the homeowners?
Well...
Or other businesses? Yes. So I just think there's a lot that we don't know yet, and if you... Same with Commissioner Eagle. If you sent that to me three weeks ago and didn't mention, hey, this is coming up. We talked a few weeks ago, you didn't mention it. Hey, I sent you an email, you need to look at it. We've been doing a lot of work around here on our master thoroughfare plan, preparing for budget, all the things that we were currently doing. So if I missed that email, I apologize, but I didn't know anything about this until it popped up on the agenda. So I just think we need to really take a step back, talk to our community, learn more about this, talk to other counties that have done this. I did, as I mentioned, I did talk to Mr. Law, who was in Tarrant County. Tarrant County is already in 39, and he did have a few things to say, but said, you know, he did know about the ad valorem tax on the business personal property. But I think we just need to make sure that we are doing what our community would want us to do.
And I want to add... Are you through?
Yes.
Okay. I misspoke on the CFR. 19 CFR 146 is 58 pages, which is, you know, I haven't had a chance to look through it totally, but there is a free trade zone manual that the government put out, and it's... This one's 245 pages. You know, all I'm asking, and the table of contents is like 12 pages. And so I'm just trying to... I'm not saying that I'm against this. I'm just saying that I don't have enough information for me to make a lucid vote on it right now. And if it's not... If the next agenda item's not contingent on this one, then I'm not sure I see any harm to giving us a little more time on this item. So again, I've got a motion on the table to table this for the moment.
A second.
All right. The motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to table item number two, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? Well, I disagree with that. I think we need to. Parker County has signed it, Tarrant County has signed it, all the other counties around us have signed it. It doesn't commit us to anything. All it does is give us the opportunity for somebody to make an application, and then we check and see what are the benefits or disadvantages. I just don't understand how that is a bad thing. I just don't do it. But it can prevent, in the meantime, some other company taking advantage and going to another company, just like the nuclear plant. Every time I see Danny Chambers up here, he laughs at me and says, you know, just think, all that time, you could have... Hood County... The nuclear people came to Hood County initially to build the nuclear plant, and the governing body at that time, the Commissioners' Court, said no. So they moved it 150 yards into Somerville County, look at the tax base and the tax benefits that they've had for all these years. Holy smoke. That's what I'm saying.
Well, let me add something here. So this letter...
Not through yet. So for my deal, it's time to act. That's what these other people have... Other counties around here have done it. It doesn't commit us to anything. Doesn't commit us to anything. If we find out that it's not good, we don't approve it. If it has good jobs, good benefit, brings good money, yes, let's do it. That's what this gives us, an opportunity. How can you go wrong about that? I don't get it. I yield.
So I just want to comment on the letter that's being... As part of this agenda item. At the time... This is the last sentence in the second paragraph. "At the time that any specific site is proposed for FTZ designation, parties potentially affected by the site's designation, such as a local school board, will need to provide their own correspondence indicating their views on the impact on tax collections." Now, again, I don't know what the impact on tax collections would... Could be, and I may not be able to ever figure that out till we do something, but I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, give me a couple more weeks to look at this. I mean, everything with this judge is right now, right now, right now, and I disagree with that. And I am not comfortable voting on this today. So my motion... I've had a motion, a second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, let me pitch in here. I don't... Dave, I'm with you. If you need some time to take a look at this, let's table it, take a look at it, dig a little deeper into it. There were a couple of questions that I have today that I've not looked thoroughly into, so I'm good with letting you have some time to look that over and get a couple more answers. And Shay, I'd like to visit with you a little more on a couple of these things and move forward from there, so.
Good. Okay. All those in favor of tabled item number two say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed said nay. Nay. The ayes have it, three to one. Okay. Item number three. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign a letter of support for Project Patriot, an economic development initiative involving a proposed large capital investment, the creation of 60 high-wage permanent jobs in Hood County, and a property tax abatement. May convene into executive session pursuant to Government Code 551.087. Let's see here. We do have some speakers on board here, and the first one is Daniel Lacy. Lakey, I'm sorry.
I've been called in a lot worse.
Judge, Commissioners, I appreciate your time. I'm going to ask you to table this one, too, and I'm going to ask you to table it till after November, because if this proposed project is heading up in Precinct 211... Precinct 211 already has three gas plants. We've got a fourth one that we're trying to fight to keep out. We've got a Bitcoin mine. We've got a battery plant, which is called a BAS operation system. We've got a second BAS system that's about to be built. We got 2,000 acres that they're looking at for solar power. Enough is enough. It's gotten enough that I represent not only Protect Hood County, which is about protecting just our environment in general, but I also represent the citizens of Mitchell Bend, which is applied to incorporate in our own city. We want to be our own city because we need to be able to regulate all this stuff coming in. You guys talked about with the last note, all the infrastructure that may need to be there. If there is a fire, who's going to put it out? We are over seven miles from the nearest fire department. We are over 1,000 feet, probably several miles, from the nearest fire hydrant. If you have a fire, how are you going to put it out? More industrial businesses are not going to help us until we at least address some of the infrastructure. So if we get our own city, we will address that with these industries that come in. When you look at a tax abatement... So I served with another city before I moved out in this area, and I have issued tax abatements. I am not anti-business. I am not anti-tax abatement. But right now, to do that, when the industry that is there has decimated my property value, but my taxes have gone up, and when I go down to fight it, they say, we're well-funded, we're represented by legal counsel, and we know what we're doing. I've never fought taxes before. I'm not well-funded, and I'm not represented by legal counsel. So they ditched mine, and I'm not even on the budget to have them look at my taxes. And you want to give a business a tax break so they can come in, raise my tax property? They're asking five times the value for land around me to buy the big land while my property value is going down. You guys are killing us with pollution. You're killing us with taxes. You're killing us with no infrastructure. Obviously, the state of Texas just had a recent major accident, and maybe they could see it coming and maybe they couldn't, but I'm telling you right now, there is no way to put out a battery fire. We do not have the suppression systems. If one of those gas plants were to catch on fire, there is no way to put it out, period. You have no water up on top of that hill. You have no infrastructure to stop it. You have no way to protect the citizens of Hood County, which is one of the reasons why I'm here. Y'all need to let us vote. Let us get our city. If we don't, then it's up to y'all. If we get the city, then it's up to us. I think that that's fair. You'll be able to hear from the people. We do have an open house. We'd love for you guys to come. It's Sunday at the Pure Price Church here in Granbury. It'll be at 5:00 PM. You guys can come talk to us, hear what the citizens have to say. You can give your piece, too, and let them know what you have to say. But I'm just asking you guys to think about the infrastructure and what is going on up in 211 before you bring in more industry to just blow us up. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Mr. Lakey. So you said all these businesses are either coming or already broken ground?
Most of them are already here, so we have a court hearing with the state of Texas to try to stop a fourth gas plant from being built. We'll see how that goes. Right now, it's scheduled for August 22nd or 26th through the 28th, but I think that they're looking to try to move it back. We're trying to fight that. The second battery plant, last I heard, had... Everything had been approved, and they were looking to break ground shortly. They've not started, but it's my understanding that's coming soon.
Okay. So my point is you named off four or five businesses that...
I didn't even mention the Bitcoin mine, yeah.
And that's without a foreign trade zone designation.
And that's without a foreign trade zone designation. There is plenty of stuff going on right now.
Thank you.
And so, thank you.
Okay. The next speaker is John. Is it Ally?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good.
Judge, I'm going to yield back my time. I believe you've done an excellent job of presenting your case for a study to be done on items number two and number three. It has been tabled at this time, and we respect that.
Thank you. Okay. Tina Brown.
I would also ask you to table this. Since you haven't even done any discussion about it, I mean, I didn't know this was about the solar plant, and I thought I was pretty sure that this court was never going to give an abatement again, and now you're talking about an abatement and you're talking about 60 high-wage permanent jobs, but you didn't give any background. I mean, I haven't heard any discussion about it, so I would like to have a table, too, until we know more. Thank you.
Okay. Shay, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think the most important thing to...
So I think the most important thing to recognize is that a tax abatement is this court's only way to control anything that is going on outside in the county. It's the way that you can regulate air quality, noise mitigation, fire coverage, infrastructure. If you don't give tax abatements, you have no ability to regulate those things out in the county. All of these companies that were mentioned previously can come in, can build whatever they want, unregulated, because that is the way that it is currently set up. The tax abatement gives us the ability to dictate all of these standards. So the tax abatement is far more for our benefit than the companies. So it's, it's the carrot, not the stick.
That's right. You know, if it's like that Bitcoin company, if it's not illegal, they can operate it there. We don't have, the county does not have the ability to pass ordinances like the city does. If it's legal, am I correct in that, Mr. Head? If it's, doesn't violate the battery you're talking about here, the battery plant, if it doesn't violate the state law, there's nothing that we can do about it. It's like the solar farm going out in Fort Spunky. It's not in a floodplain. They're not asking for any roads. It's in the county. It's not in the city. The owners of that Fort Spunky can put in a solar farm, and there's nothing that the county can do about it. Am I right in that, Mr. Head? So what, this is exactly what Ms. Hopkins is saying about it. If you're given an abatement, you can put restrictions on this company to get the abatement. I agree with, I was kind of always against an abatement until you learn to look at it differently. And when Ms. Hopkins and I were talking about it, she was, too. I remember when she was against all these abatements. And now that she understands it differently, that you can get them to put up barms, to do sound deals, to put more restrictions on the air quality control. We get a lot more, the county does, than we give them. So to me, it's kind of a no-brainer to go ahead and, and say, you know, let's go ahead and do this, and like it is on everything. You don't have to give anybody a tax abatement. If they don't want to dance with us and do what we ask them to do, we don't give them the abatement. It's not an across-the-board deal. Again, it's a project by project. Is it good, permanent paying jobs? Is it a big, good tax base for the county? You do it. If it doesn't make that criteria, you don't do it. How can you go wrong on that? I mean, it's kind of pretty basic, and then, so.
Ellen, I think-
Bill, anybody have any discussion?
Yeah, I think that Shay hit, hit a very important point here. We asked the legislature to provide some relief for the noise going on at the Bitcoin plant. Deaf ears on that, nothing, nothing there. How, how can we, these things are affecting our community greatly. The noise coming out of there is not a small issue. We have nothing, absolutely no way at all to address that situation. The county is completely powerless in this situation. So if somebody comes in, and it is a compromise, there is a concession. We have to give something in order to get something. Excuse me. So if, if a business or an industry is coming in that could have some negative effect somewhere on something, the only measure of control that we can take is to offer something to say, give us that control. Give us that authority. Perhaps it's a noise abatement bond that they have to pay. And if there's noise that gets over some level, that we get to decide what it is, then we can come back in, and there's a bond there to make sure that it gets paid for and taken care of. The, as far as infrastructure and stuff like that, is, the area that we're, and I know I can't get into a lot here, but are we talking about putting more homes in here, more rooftops in here? Because that's something that I hear a lot of people talking about. We're not, we're losing our small-town feel. We're growing rooftops everywhere, which is providing a lot of strain on all county services. It's increased roads, more, the water is a concern around here. Everything infrastructure-wise, government services-wise, is increased to deal with more residential. If you bring a huge project in here, and that doesn't require a lot of the resources, it's, you know, if it's not a draw on the water table, if you're not impacting the sewer system, they're building the streets for you. There are a lot of things that, this is very positive, especially to the taxpayer's wallet on the backside. You're adding huge value, valuation, to the county, and that is positively impacting the taxpayers' outflow to take care of the government services and stuff. So, again, there, this is not an easy black-and-white, cut-and-dry issue. It is, there are a lot of gray areas in here, and in order, in some instances, to get what we need to get, we have to give a little bit. Go ahead.
And if I could, I want to speak a little bit to that as well, because I think what is important for everyone to understand is that rooftops don't pay the freight, right? They don't pay for our infrastructure fully. They don't pay for our services. Every single year, there are things in y'all's budget that you are unable to fund because you don't have the revenue to generate it. I would much rather see companies come in and pay for that infrastructure, pay for those services, whether, rather than continue to have to increase that burden on the people that live here. 5,000 more houses isn't going to make your tax burden less. It's going to require more infrastructure, more services, that simply aren't paid for by those homes. When a company comes in, the burden, at least on infrastructure and services, might be similar, but they're paying 10 to 20 times more than the revenue that's generated from the homes that would have been on this location as well. And so I think that those are some things that we have to look at. Would it be nice if we could close our doors and there was no growth, right? Not wanting a community to grow doesn't make it stop growing. It makes you unprepared for the growth, and you end up growing in ways that you're not happy with. And in the future, you don't have the services and the jobs and the wages and the things that, that make a community great.
I'm a little confused about your comment about losing the small-town feel but asking for big industries. That seems like it's, that's not congruent, so.
Sure it is, because you're not putting 5,000 rooftops in there.
But small-town feel, but then being industrial? I'm not sure that makes sense.
This is, this is like a warehouse. You know, the project we're talking about here is a, a good-looking building off in the corner. I don't think that that's going to negatively impact the small-town feel.
Especially when you can tell them, put plant trees all around it, put up a berm all around it, do all the beautifications all around it. You've got that control if you have an abatement in place. If you don't, they don't have to do anything. They just do basic, comply with basic state law, and that's the way it's going to be.
So do we know anything about this company? I mean-
Yeah, I've sat and talked.
So it's a, an LLC that we know, and LLCs are come-and-go. They've been in, the LLC was created.
Well, I'm under an MDA on most of those topics. I thought this was an executive session, so I can't tell specific details about the company, their capital investment or specifics. But yes, I do know the company. And again, this is a letter of support, not a legally binding document. This is so that we can continue to learn about them, continue to know exactly what parameters need to be in a future agreement. So this is not a binding document at this point. It's saying, this is something we would support if, there's a huge if in there, you do all of the things that we feel like need to happen for this, this company to come here. And unfortunately, if we say no to this, they can still do whatever they want. This, this is planning to close within the next 30 to 60 days. If we don't want to do this, and we don't want to have this conversation, they'll still come. And if they don't, there'll be someone right on their heels that may not be willing to have any kind of conversation with us. So I think that we're in a great position right now to be able to dictate and protect what goes on in the county, a position that we haven't been in, in many of these other companies that have already come and built.
So I do have some questions about the LLC. So if we want to go into executive session, then we should, because I think there's a lot of information that we need to know before we decide to do this.
But use your time now. You want to say? Come on up to the microphone.
Judge, Commissioners, I am John Ally. I'm a citizen here in Hood County. I just had a, an observation, and I guess we need to do a study on this, because I'm concerned, are we not for growth? And that's my biggest question. Are we here for growth, or do we want to stay stagnant? Do we want to stay a small town? Or is our intention to grow? If we're going to grow, then we're going to have to also grow our infrastructure, which means you're going to have to, at some point, address the issues of police, fire, and emergency services, which means you're going to spend some money. Where's that money going to come from? How are we going to get the money? That's the only comments I had, Judge. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as you, as you know, we've been working on infrastructure with the Master Thoroughfare Plan for over a year, and that's why I mentioned that earlier, is that we, we have been working on it, but it's up to the voters to decide whether that goes forward or not. So that's, to me, that's a critical piece to this puzzle, is will we be able to improve the infrastructure? Will the voters be on board with that? Otherwise, we're going to grow without the infrastructure, because the growth's coming. Whether we do any of the things that are on the agenda today, the growth is coming. You heard that from one of the other speakers. And so we need to ensure that we have the infrastructure in place.
And I don't disagree with you. The growth is coming. There's no doubt. And, and again, to that point, we, we have some choices to make here. We have some decisions to make. Do we add 5,000 more homes, the traffic that's going along with that, going up 377 to Fort Worth to go to work? That's, that's a very real decision that we need to look at. I'm, I am very concerned, looking back at the legacy of the power plant. I don't want to be that guy. I don't want to be the one that says no to an opportunity that, that could have had a huge impact to the taxpayer in Hood County. Something that, it comes in and builds, it contributes to that tax base, to build the infrastructure, to get, to deal with these problems without bringing, what, 12,000? What's the, 2.5 people per household or whatever, or the, the national average is or whatever, in here in population. And I think that that population growth, to balance some of that out, that's a, I hear that a lot, is, you know, golly, I wish somebody closed the gate behind me whenever. And I think that this is a way, seriously, this is a way that we can look toward limiting that population density by encouraging that type of a, a business venture here, and increasing the tax base and lessening the burden on the taxpayers. So I think that's-
Yeah, and just before we step out into executive session, I did want to address something that the judge said about regulations and the battery, battery energy storage systems. We do have the state laws, while we can't do much about the cryptocurrency, we do have the state fire protection codes that will allow us to have, we have our fire marshal here who's working on our, our implementation of that. So we do have some ability to regulate slash protect the citizens on the battery energy storage systems. We just need to get that in place. And, and actually, the state law is already there. You just have to enforce it, right?
Do I hear a motion?
No, I thought we were going into executive session.
All right, well, we're going to delay going into executive session, finish with the rest of the docket here. So, item number four. Discuss and take appropriate action to modify the agenda item and auditor deadlines for the Commissioners Court date scheduled to comply with House Bill 1522 relating to notice of a meeting held under the Open Meetings Law effective September 1, 2025. Ms. Auditor, you want to speak on that, please? Good morning.
Good morning. So the law was brought to my attention by Commissioner Samuelson, and it's changing the 72-hour rule to a three-business-day rule, which impacts the due dates for all invoices and payment requests to our office. So the way I see it, we have two options. Either we change our deadlines, or we change our Commissioners Court dates to accommodate this. After discussing it with my office and others, we would like to have the due dates pushed back three days. So right now, items are due to our office on Tuesday, to then be due to your office on Wednesday for the agenda to be published within an appropriate amount of time. I'd like for that to be moved back to Thursday due to our office, and then Friday, or Wednesday due to our office, Thursday due to your office. That way, we can still have the ability to have a life and take a Friday off, or if a holiday falls on a Friday, it doesn't constantly change, which a lot of holidays fall on Fridays or Mondays.
So all the departments get their information to you on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday meeting?
Right.
Okay.
It's going to be a big shift.
Then it would be due to my office on what day?
Let's do it Wednesday, due to your office Thursday. That way, it can be published in time.
No, it's due, it's due-
Yeah, it's going to change significantly. We use the weekends, and now we don't have the weekends. So for a court on a Tuesday, it has to be published to everyone on Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Monday.
How about the preceding week?
Correct.
Okay, so if we get, like the comment-
So I did an example with Brenda and, and Ms. Matlock. So for the September 9th court, so this starts September 1st.
Yeah.
So for the September 9th court, which is Tuesday, the agenda would need to be posted by Wednesday afternoon, September 3rd. The agenda items would be due by Friday, August 29th, since September 1st is a holiday. And then line item transfers and invoices would be due by Wednesday, August 28th. Then for the September 23rd court, the agenda would be posted by Wednesday afternoon, September 17th. Agenda items due by Monday, September 15th, and line item transfer invoices by Thursday, September 11th. So-
It's two days after the last Commissioners Court.
It's, yeah, for that, those first couple meetings, and the transition between August and September, it's going to be a little rough. But then, once we get used to it, it'll be business as usual, but it's definitely going to be a drastic change.
Not to mention that that's the last part of when budget is due, so.
Right, yeah, it changes all our postings for the public meetings, for our tax rate setting, the salary setting, the proposed budget, and the final budget. All of those have to be to the paper much sooner to adhere to these new things. We don't have to make any decisions today. This is an opportunity to discuss it and think about it. Usually, we post the schedule sometime in August for you guys to accept for everyone in the county, but we'll have to be pretty diligent with that, because it will be a shift.
Put all those dates on a schedule.
So you can see-
Instead of just the holidays that we always agree to, just tell where every department has to give it to you, and then- has to give it to you, and then when it has to be due, given to Brenda in my office so that she can get it prepared. How many days is she going to have?
She and I, and Nanette, we all discussed it. And so we came up with a comfortable schedule, but typically, our office publishes our due dates relating to the court dates, and that's something that you all approve also. So I don't have that with me today. I can bring it to next court because August is going to be.
That's the one that has everything on it. It shows in every department, and then every department should have that with them as a master sheet to know every time when their reports are due to you and when they have to be turned into the, to my office so that it gets plenty of time to get prepared so that it can then be published, put together and published. So that's good. So then I'm going to make a motion that we table it and let's do that. How about that? Have you all got that? That's my motion, that we table that.
I disagree with you, Judge.
Second. Oh, my gosh. Okay, second.
Huh? You seconded?
I seconded.
I thought Dave did.
Oh, I.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay. Motion made by County Judge Massingill to table item number four, second by Commissioner Dave Eagle. All those in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Carries unanimously 4-0. Okay.
Good morning. Do you want to read it?
Huh?
Go ahead, did you want to read it?
You just love being in the spotlight now. You used to be so, I thought we were going to have to give you a Rottweiler to approach the bench up here, but now you just love it, don't you? Okay, item number five, discuss and take appropriate action on the Texas Association of Counties Unemployment Compensation Reserve Fund of $4,751.78. Surely, we got some decimals. You don't know what to do with $4,000?
Well, Stephanie and I discussed it. We do want to put it in miscellaneous revenue fund 10. It's such a small amount, it's pointless to put it in capital, but this is for the years of 2020 to 2024, so just an overage that they send back to us, and they typically do every so often.
Okay. Well, it's better than owing money, isn't it?
That's true.
Okay. So I do hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we move the Texas Association, or receive the Texas Association of Counties Unemployment Compensation Reserve refund of $4,751.78 into miscellaneous revenue fund 10.
Okay.
motion made by Commissioner Andrews to receive the Texas Association of Counties Unemployment Compensation refund of $4,751.78 to be placed in miscellaneous revenue fund 10, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 4-0. Item number six, convene into executive session per the Texas Government Code on Personnel Matters. We will do that at the end of the Commissioners' Court. So now it brings us to the consent agenda. Does any commission wish to discuss or pull anything from the consent agenda, or do I hear a motion to approve?
Let me ask, I need to pull G and H just to, this is one of the things I talked to Mr. Mills about yesterday. Were you able to review those and those two contracts?
Pull both G and H?
Yes, they're just two contracts that, just wanted to be sure he had had a chance to review them.
Yeah, one of them I printed and read it while I was sitting back halfway, listening to y'all and halfway reading that, but that was the drug testing deal. And I looked it up last year. It was on the consent agenda as a renewal, and so I know your point about, okay, maybe a contract shouldn't be on consent, it should be on miscellaneous. It was on consent last year, so maybe we should have done that last year too, but I didn't really see anything in there that jumped out at me. I asked Melissa, you know, all this new red tape that we've got to go through about non-discrimination and cybersecurity and all that kind of stuff, you know, should we, do some of these contracts that are coming up for renewal need to have all that stuff in there also? I don't know if you want to speak to that, but she said, at least on one of them, we needed to go ahead and put that in there.
Oh, so we want to, need to pull these?
No, no.
Oh.
That's really not up to the court. I mean, that just needs to go in with contract. Like when the judge signs it, it just goes with that verbiage back to the holder of the contract. But that's going to be moving forward with everything, not just on a contract that.
Okay, so it's not part of the current, it's not part of the contract that was attached to the agenda, the cybersecurity nor the.
It's, I mean, my portion's not included in that. It'll just be inserted with the contract and then sent back to insurance medical. Because all have already accrued all of that verbiage, the assurances and the appendix.
Right, so I guess with that, what I'm understanding, if they somehow wanted to balk at that, then we just go back to the drawing board, you know? But I think we need to go ahead and just put those in as a course of business with everything. So that was the only.
Is that the same with the interlocal, with North Central Texas, that that verbiage needs to be added?
I think so, and that was what I, right. I don't like it anymore than you do.
So add addendums for cybersecurity and non-discrimination?
Right, now, I guess the question I have, and this is maybe a Melissa question, you know, if it's not a tech-type thing, or if there's not those kinds of things involved, does it need the cybersecurity? Like if it's this drug testing thing, I don't know if that, I don't know if that needs that in there or not, you know?
They don't have any access to our system.
Right, so I don't, to me, I wouldn't think that the drug testing contract doesn't really need that in there, right? Is that, would you agree with that?
I would rely on Chris for that, but I don't see why it would.
Right, okay.
That's the only thing that would be in our system.
Right, but the non-discrimination probably should be in all of them, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would go ahead and just put that in there, just the boilerplate one that we have all the time, you know, just put it in there and just say, this is our, you know, addition to what we've always renewed, and I can't imagine they would push back on that. But if that's what the feds are telling us we got to do, then I guess that's what we got to do. But, big picture, I didn't really see anything in the contracts that was alarming.
Okay.
Besides, you know, just put those addendums in there. So.
Okay.
Drug testing is already delayed anyway, so this is not going to delay anything, is it?
No, I'm saying, sign it now.
You're talking about pulling it out. Are you saying it's all right to leave it in?
We just need to.
Well, what I would do is just approve what's in front of you now, and then with the, with both of them, put the non-discrimination thing in there, and with the 911 deal, go ahead and put the cybersecurity in there because I think there's some technology in play with the drug testing. I can't see any technology in play in that situation, so I don't see why we need it.
Oh, I think I can, anyone else have anything on the consent agenda, or I can make a motion? Okay. So move to accept the consent agenda with the change that items G and H on the contract with the interlocal agreement to add the addendum for cybersecurity and the non-discrimination clauses, and on H, the drug testing renewal to ensure that the non-discrimination clause is added.
Second. That agenda, on the consent agenda, with those two exceptions on the thing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now that brings us, no road ops and no development, right? Okay, now we're down to financial. Again, the auditor, Stephanie Matlock.
Well, hello. This court, we have $1,910,429.05 in invoices that my office has reviewed and recommends payment.
Okay. Doc, your motion?
Judge, I'd like to pull off the payments over $10,000 and ask a couple of questions. We have quite a few payments over $10,000, but the one that I have a question on is the Flock Group, Flock Cameras. It shows a payment of $131,000 in fees, which is what we voted on on March 11th. My understanding is we're paying that upfront, but according to the grant, 75% of it will be repaid back to us, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm trying to clear up, I went back and looked at Mr. Andrews' motion on March 11th, and he made a motion to approve the judge signing the grant with oversight by the five elected law enforcement officials in this county where they can access the audit data so that there's some checks and balances in here. And my understanding is that's not being done right now. Can you, can you come up, constable, please? And I'm bringing this to court's attention before we vote to pay this money.
So the Flock Cameras were approved, that motion was made in court, and we've not been contacted at any time about oversight or given access for oversight on the auditing. I know that Flock Camera, due to the discrepancies and the thing, you know, not discrepancies, the concerns throughout the nation, they have automatic auditing and logging put in place, but we've not been given access to any of those protocols or to review. There's been no discussion of it at any time for any of the constables.
Roger, you want to come up? Please.
After the March 11th date, then we put that group together, Sean pulls those reports and sends them off for their review. So it's been going on four months?
Yes, sir.
So.
Well, three months, I haven't done this much.
Oh, okay, three months, so April, May, June, and we haven't pulled July's yet. So it's been working. It's been going on. I don't know why the constable said what he said.
I watched what you told us. Have you brought that, your policy back to the court? Have you asked to vote on it?
I, that day was a busy day in court. I sent that to Commissioner Samuelson yesterday to put it on the agenda if we need to talk about it, but we've had that in place since right after that March vote.
Okay, well, if we need to put, do you have anything you want to add?
I was, as he said, he gave it to me yesterday, and I haven't had a chance to read it and compare it to some of the notes that I wrote on the old policy, but I will do that and put it on the next court.
And it's a, really a sheriff's office policy. It's not a need to be a court policy, but anyway, I guess I brought it to the court so it can be on the next agenda.
Well, that was one of the concerns was, that some had on the system that only, that there's, in fact, I think that's why the motion was made for the other, for the constables to have access. So if we're going to put that on another agenda, then I'll put, I'll retreat from this, at this moment, we need to go ahead and pay this, I assume, and I'll put it back in the pay bills agenda, and then we'll put this on the agenda next court, and we'll talk about it.
So, so I want to address this. So when I went back and watched, you guys voted to approve it and then let them do the audit. Nor was, nor was said how they had access. So what I did was, I did the policy, and he has gotten emails with the audit, and he has signed it, and that has been submitted to the Commissioner of Court. So the audits are already happening. In order for them to get access, you would have to give them full access to our Flock Camera. That's not going to happen. They can't because the way Flock is set up is set up under our ORI, and I had a lengthy discussion yesterday with this. So Flock is trying to see if they can get read-only. I offered for one constable to come in and look and say, I can pull the audit because the thing is, people think that me or another person down the road may alter the data. So I offered to them to come in here and I would pull it for them, and pull it so they could see that was legit pulled down. But nobody answered it back because you cannot, I cannot give them access the way you guys are saying. It can't happen, the technology isn't even there. Flock is trying to see if they can do read-only, but the problem is, is that constables have their own ORI. In order to give them access to be legit with the state, they would have to leave their ORI, come under ours, and then they could have access to ours. That's how it would have to work.
Okay, well, then we can hack that out next court.
So I need to know what, tell Flock, is the bill getting paid or not paid?
Yeah, we're going to put it back on and pay it. That's, I mean, I'm not arguing with that part of it.
So what I got from the court, when I got back, I did what you guys wanted. So there was oversight and the audits were being happened. The question was, were they supposed to have access to it, which, according to what I saw, nobody told me to give them access because I would have said that can't happen.
Well, the only reason that I brought it, so I've got a string of emails here where you say that the only people that can pull an audit log are administrators.
Yes, sir.
And of the system, which is limited to the very few people.
Yes, sir.
And so the other, the other five, the other four law enforcement are unable to pull an audit log, right?
Correct, because they don't, they're not under our ORI. The only person under our ORI of those five law enforcement is the sheriff.
Okay.
So he's the only one that could legit pull it down to keep us out of trouble.
Well, I'm confident we can straighten this out in the next court.
Do you want a copy of my policy?
Sure, yeah, sure.
And I can send it to everybody ahead of time. But ever since I became fire marshal, I had to have an ORI and got audited, just like the constables, but it's a little bigger situation since I'm the sheriff, so I'm over everything that goes in and out of this county. So basically, I've been through about 20 audits, and sometimes it's kind of painful. It's, and so at the state level and the federal level, they teach you, protect that information. And so I can't just let anybody get in there. So I can't, I don't know why we can't all work together and trust each other to do the right things. We are all doing the right things. Some people just don't like it that they can't do it their own way, but I'm doing it.
Can we pretend like we don't know what ORI means?
I had to ask yesterday.
So think of it as your mailing address. So everybody in the United States that has anything to do with law enforcement and the provinces, whenever they send message traffic or like kit confirmations or something like that, that is the address they send it to us. So like, the Hood County Sheriff's has one, everybody that's law enforcement in here has one, so, sorry, that's kind of what it does, it's a mailing address.
Yeah, I can't think of what ORI actually stands for.
I looked it up yesterday, it's originating agency identifier. So it is your, the sheriff's office specific, unique identifier that identifies you. It's like, I guess you would think of it kind of as a.
It's a mailing address.
Yes.
For TCIC, NCIC. So Hood County Sheriff's Office is 111-0000. And then under me, for the constables, I think, like for the fire marshal, is 111-0400, I believe.
Kind of like a bank routing number.
Yeah.
Or an IP address.
For TCIC, NCIC, yeah, so.
So one of the things, yes, we had a long conversation about this yesterday because I, I think the intent of the motion was to provide transparency, and what was implemented didn't really fit that all the way. So what we talked about yesterday, and I know she, the person you sent the email to hasn't responded yet unless she just responded to you.
No, she is getting with her legal team because they may be, like I said yesterday, technology may not be there, so they're talking with their legal team and the other people to see if they can do it. They don't want to answer you too soon until they see they can do it.
So I think, like we said yesterday, I think there's some way to satisfy the intent of the motion, which was to have an independent review. of the motion, which was to have an independent review because I think that what we talked about yesterday, you pulling the data and giving it to someone to review, isn't really fulfilling the transparency that we thought that we voted on. So at least what I thought Ron Ament.
You know, and that was the intent, was to make sure that, again, it's not anybody here now, but where are we in the future with that transparency and everybody kind of looking over it?
And I would say, when we have this discussion next time, I will be very clear on what you want. That way, I can tell you, can we do it legally now? Because my job is to keep him out of trouble and to keep us from getting sued. And make sure everybody's information because that's all criminal history and stuff that people can use against him. So that's my job. That's why if I was here that month you guys did that, I said, "No, we can't do that." And I understood that. So that's all I'm trying to do.
So I will put that policy back on the agenda and...
So anyway, I pulled that off. I'll put it back on, and I'll make a motion. We pay the bills. $1,910,429.05.
Second. The motion has been made by Commissioner T. Paul to pay the bills.
The amount of the... whatever it is. I might move it on.
$1,910,429 and a nickel. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 4-0. So at this time, we are at 25 minutes to 11:00. We are journeying into executive session to discuss item number three and item number six. You can hang around.
Okay, it is now 11:21 and we are convening back into Commissioner's Court. No action was taken in Executive Section. And now we're going to discuss item number three. Who wants to take that? Is that a here motion?
Yeah, I don't mind making a motion. I think there's a letter of support included in this packet. And I have made some changes to this letter of support dated July 8, 2025. And so I will make the motion to allow the county judge to sign this letter of support for this project, which is an economic development initiative involving a proposed large capital investment, the creation of 60 high-wage permanent jobs in Hood County, and a property tax abatement with the changes that I've made.
Did you have that down? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. All right, three to one, it passes. Okay, with Commissioner Samuelson voting nay. Okay, item number six. Does anybody wish to make a motion regarding item number six?
Yes, Judge, this is in recognition of Mr. Larson's taking on additional responsibilities in the IT department. I want to make a motion to temporarily increase his salary from June 30 through August 30 by 17%, raising his salary to $81,269. Then I've discussed this with the auditor and HR department, and the funds are available to do this. This is again in recognition of him taking on the responsibilities that he's done over the last few weeks and through August 30. And if there's not a decision made by that time, we can always come back and adjust that.
Yeah, this is kind of an interim, a temporary raise for that time span. So yeah, I'll second that.
Have that motion down? Okay, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson, second by Commissioner Andrews regarding the interim increase in salary for Mr. Larson. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion go unanimously for zero. And that, ladies and gentlemen, concludes this Commissioner's Court's hearing.